Hello. We're going to get started here. Such an amazing turnout, I think we're out of seats, so thank you for everyone who's standing in the back. My name is Elizabeth Reiser, I'm with the League of Women Voters. This is our seventh candidate forum of the season, and it's our last one, so I'm a little excited about the fact that this is the last one. And of course, we've saved the best for last, which is Hilliard. I also want to let people know that today is the first day of early voting, so if you are inspired after hearing the candidates speak, you can go to the Franklin County Board of Elections office at 1700 Morse Road tomorrow morning. They open at 8:00 AM, and you can cast your ballot in person. They'll be open usually business hours between now and the Sunday before Election Day. And then, of course, Election Day is November 7th. Polling locations will be open between 6:30 AM and 7:30 PM for you to cast your vote. If you plan to vote by mail, we encourage you to get your absentee ballot request in as soon as possible. The Board of Elections, I think their plan was to mail out the, start mailing out the ballots today. So if you've already requested it, you can check your mailbox in a few days, and it should be in there waiting for you. If you need additional information about candidates and issues on the ballot, the League publishes a candidate forum, which, no, a candidate guide, which includes all candidates and issues running in Franklin County. We have hard copies on the back table. We also have an online version at www.Vote411.org, where you put in your address, and it'll bring up a personalized ballot, so you don't have to comb through all the different candidates that are running. I know some of you here may live in the Hilliard City School District and not necessarily voting for Hilliard City Council, so if you're voting for Columbus City Council or any other candidates that aren't here tonight, we will have information about them in the guide. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Angie Rader, who is the, let me bring my notes into the screen, the head of the Social Studies Division at Hilliard-Davidson A-School here in Hilliard.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and the board, and thank you for this opportunity. And thank all of you citizens of Hilliard and the township and residents of Hilliard City Schools for being here. It makes a government teacher's heart very warm, so yes, thank you. Before we meet our candidates, I'd like to introduce Pat, Patrick Losinski, sorry, Losinski, who will talk about our levy Columbus, for the Columbus Petrograph Library. Mr. Losinski is a member of the levy campaign. All voters who are served by Columbus Library System, including residents of Hilliard, will be voting on the issue.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. My day job is putting chairs up in the meeting room as well, but welcome to the Hilliard Library. And, you know, it was glossed over when Elizabeth said that, and I've been seeing a lot of her lately at these forums, but I think we owe the League of Women Voters a great round of applause. Who else does? It really is a great community service. So, yes, my day job really is as the CEO of the library, but today, or for this event, I'm actually here as a member of the committee that's working on a levy for the library for the November ballot. And the library has a 1.5 mil levy on the ballot. It is the first ballot issue for the library in 13 years. Some of you may remember back in 2010, we were on the ballot, and at that time, I made a promise to the voters that we would not come back for at least 10 years, so it has been 13 years since we have been back. The 1.5 million, 1.5 mil levy, it would cost the homeowner $53 for every $100,000 of assessed valuation. And I think there's been, as most of you know, there's been a lot of question about, well, what is the assessed valuation? We don't understand that, and how does it work? My taxes are going up 40%. Here's how the levy works. You're voting in 2023 based on the current values. The new values go into effect in January. So the library's 1.5 mil request, if approved, will actually collect at 1.07 mils starting in January. So at that point, it's only $38 per 100,000, but the home has gone up in value, so the number to keep in mind is $100,000 in today's assessed value. It will cost $53 per 100,000. So what does the library, first of all, why does the library have to come back for a levy? Well, over the last 13 years, the amount of growth in that levy is four tenths of 1% per year. That's what the library has, an increase over a 13-year period of time. So we feel we've managed the dollars wisely, but at some point, with years of 9% inflation and 7% inflation, you have to come back to the voters and ask for the money. And what does the money do? It supports everything the library does. So think about the materials we buy, the programs that we offer, the technology that people use, and any facilities needs that we have as well are all taken care of through the levy. Your library users, you come in and you visit the library, I mean, this is one of the things that today's library actually does. All the traditional things about checkout and materials are still there, but it is also about technology. And during COVID, the library thought, how can we serve on a community level? We distributed 350,000 test kits during COVID, so many of you were in for curbside pickup. We moved so many things to electronic to try to help the kids who were expected to continue to learn electronically. The library moved many of our resources, and we still do that. We worked on broadband. Most people in this room are here with a cellphone, or an iPhone, or an iPad. I can tell you, throughout this county, there's over 60,000 homes without broadband in the home. Those people come to the library. We have 1.9 million reservations to use a computer or to use our Wi-Fi during the course of the year. The library is there for everyone. We have a presence in all the neighborhoods. We have great cooperation with libraries in the surrounding counties, so you actually have access with our library to all the other libraries as well through a delivery service. So we try to do the best we can, and at some point, we have to be back in front of you, so we hope you will give that consideration. I do want to introduce also as a citizen tonight, she's at the back door, Lauren Higgin, just raised her hand. Lauren is the, in her day job, she's the CFO of the library, but she is a Hilliard resident, and I think Lauren has special understanding, as does Amy McPlanahan, who is back there putting out chairs, and the branch manager of Hilliard. So that is the issue that we have, and I think I can hit the pause button. I don't know if there are questions or how that is happening tonight with this large crowd.
Thank you. First up, we are going to talk about the township races and the township by fiscal officer, but none of those candidates were here, except Mr. Titt. Yep, okay. Mr. Titt is running unopposed for one trustee position, so if you'd like to wave, everybody. Sorry you walked in, yep. League policy is to have a panel if two or more candidates are, races are present, so none of the other candidates for fiscal officer or for trustee are present, so we're not going to have a panel for that. The candidates participating in tonight's event are running for a Hilliard City School Board, Hilliard City Council, Norwich Township trustee. I'll begin by explaining the form procedures, which were agreed upon by all participants in advance. Each candidate will give a one-minute introductory statement. I will then ask questions, and candidates will be permitted one to two minutes to answer each question. I'll specify the length when I ask a question. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer the question, and we will change the order in which candidates are asked the question for each subsequent question. Candidates will have one minute to give a closing statement. Candidates are invited to share their qualifications and experience and talk about their plans and proposals. Some of the questions have been pre-written by the League of Women Voters, and the remainder will be solicited from the audience. Audience members who wish to ask a question will submit the question in writing. League volunteers will review the question before handing it to the moderator. The League reserves the right to reject audience questions if they are inappropriate or duplicative. The candidates can see the timekeeper, who will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, 10 seconds remaining, and when their time has expired. If a candidate continues speaking, I will say thank you and move on. Now, we'd like to invite the candidates for a Hilliard City School Board, Kelly Arnold, Caitla Master, Nadia Long, and Brian Perry, to come up and take a seat. These four candidates are running to fill two open seats. Those elected will serve four-year terms beginning in January 2024. If you have a question for all of our candidates, please write it down and hand it to one of the League members. Candidates will begin with a one-minute introduction, and we will continue down the table in order. Let's begin with Kelly Arnold.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kelly Arnold, and I've been involved in our schools for 20 years. First, as a classroom parent volunteering with teachers and helping students. I've been involved in PTO for as many years, helping out in membership, fundraising, and as a collective 17 years as a treasurer. I've been involved at the district level on numerous committees, Portrait of a Learner, Master Facilities, Technology Task Force, and I also serve within our area, as a Far West Side Area Commissioner. These are all the aspects of my service to our schools and community that I hope to bring forward to the board this fall. Thank you.
Caitla Master.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on tonight. She was actually my teacher when I attended Hilliard City Schools, so it was great to see her. Yes, my name is Caitla Master, and I am running for Hilliard City School Board. I just want to talk to you about things that I am. I am a longtime resident of this great community. In fact, okay, is this better? In fact, my roots run deeper than anybody else on this table tonight. My family, we've been here over 100 years, and my boys will be the fourth generation to graduate from Hilliard City Schools. I am also an alumni of Hilliard-Davidson, as I mentioned, class of 2003. I am a current volunteer in our schools today. I am a former ISPTO member and VP of Volunteering at the Alton Darby Creek Campus, and most importantly, I am a mom of two little boys, first and fifth grade at the Alton Darby Creek Campus. I believe Hilliard City Schools is getting back on track with academics, but there are some areas that we have opportunity to improve upon, and I would like to address those issues. Thank you, guys.
Nadia Long.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nadia Long, and I've served you eight years on the Board of Education. My journey started when my first child was in first grade. He is now at Bradley High School. The two terms have been a blessing. My first term was learning from all of the experts in our community. One of the colleagues is here tonight. The second was all about the pandemic, so my leadership skills were challenged in ways I never thought. My third term is the same goals that I started on day one. Physical responsibility, district future, and academic success. We are responsible with your taxpayer money. The future of this district is my children, and the academic success, we all have seen the reports, we're doing extremely well. My day job is at Mars Pet Care. I've spent 19 years there, and I'm the Quality and Food Safety Manager over Pedigree, Caesar, Imes Brands. My most important why I'm running are my children. I have a preschooler, a sixth grader, and a high schooler. Each and every day, I experience this district. Thank you for all being here tonight, and thank you for hosting.
Brian Perry.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for being here. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting that. I really appreciate that. My name's Brian Perry, I'm running for reelection for the Hilliard City Board of Education again this year. This is where I went to school. I graduated in 2011 from Hilliard-Darby High School with honors, and I'm so proud to be endorsed by a lot of the same teachers that I personally have. It's such an honor to me. So we're trying to refocus on some main things in this district. Academics, obviously, we're succeeding in that regard. Number one in the state of Ohio when it comes to our value-added scores, making sure that our fiscal responsibility is to the voters, of course, and to the taxpayers. To that end, we've actually managed to save over $1.7 million a year in taxpayer money that goes right back into your pockets or into our classrooms, and making sure we keep our schools safe for our students and our staff members. We've added new security officers, we've made sure that we have additional camera systems and additional school counselors as well, to make sure that all of our students are well taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitla Master, you will get the first question. Please keep your answers to one minute. Question one. What are the two most important topics the Hilliard School Board must address in the coming year?
All right. So when I met with Dave Stewart this summer, he told me day one, if I got elected, we'll be talking about a potential levy in this district. That's a huge, huge conversation that is on our horizon here in the very near future, and we need school board members that are going to look at things analytically, with a business mindset, look at our strengths, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and tactics, do a SWOT analysis. So that's one area that I believe is important coming up in regards to Hilliard City Schools. The next one is teacher morale right now. I do believe that this is a huge issue in our school districts today. We keep putting more and more on their plates and not taking anything off. We implemented two new curriculums this year, pretty fast, without piloting. We piloted iPads for six months, but we did not pilot these curriculums. Our teachers are literally putting the pieces together while they're educating our children, which is impacting their mental health. I speak with them, they tell me, guys, I'm on antidepressants, I'm on anxiety meds, I just can't do this anymore, and that's a huge issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nadia Long.
Thank you, guys. So the most, most important two topics moving forward in the next year for Hilliard City Schools, focusing on our kids. So academic readiness is definitely a big piece. So when you look at our report card, the lowest grade we got was around early literacy, so we need to continue to bring in programs like Whitten-Wimzy to support these students. Another thing is skilled trades. So yesterday, I got to go into the community and be with ours, with our 10th and 11th graders and see them getting ready for tomorrow, seeing the opportunities, so continuing to get our kids ready for tomorrow. The second most important thing is around funding. So as you guys know, we are deficit spending, and that is a place where we need to look at our funds, look at our support in our district, and make sure that we are coming to the taxpayers responsibly, and we're utilizing everything that you guys have already given us, and making sure the ask is just right. Thank you.
Brian Perry.
Yeah, I'll go through some of the things that my colleagues up here said, but academics is obviously first and foremost in our mindset. That's something that we need to focus on as a school district, and to that end, yes, we've done a heavy lift. We have actually three new areas of curriculum. We have health, math, and also language arts. We must support our teachers in doing that. I think it's going to pay dividends. We're already seeing the results of that right now. The second thing is really supporting that, continuing on with that, that theme here, and it's avoiding the distractions that our district has been facing lately. You cannot focus on academics, you cannot focus on this good fiscal responsibility, keeping our students safe, and we're constantly bombarded with distractions that have nothing to do with our district, that are brought in from outside, that are coming from a national or statewide agenda. I really want to make sure that we're focusing on what Hilliard is doing and what we are doing so unbelievably well. Avoiding those distractions allows us to focus on what matters.
Thank you. Kelly Arnold.
Pass the hot potato. For this upcoming year, we need to address the facilities, as this is something that's actually some, an area that has, has been creeping up on us. When we take a look at our, how our school has developed over the past few years, back in the 90s, we had this huge boom of people, and as such, we had a huge boom of buildings. Those buildings are aging. You know it, just like your houses, you have to replace roofs and mechanicals. So these are the things that are touching our schools, that we need to make sure that we're reaching out and educating the community on how our buildings look and what the need is, especially when we will be looking at both an operating levy and a bond levy for the following year. Additionally, we need to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students. We have students with socioeconomic needs, needs in diversity, also our kids with special needs and disabilities. So it's, it's hard to meet all of those needs, and we need to be focused on how we do that for everyone.
Thank you. Nadia Long, we will begin with you for our second question, and we ask that all of you limit your response to one minute. Question two. The slogan on the Hilliard Schools website is "Ready for Tomorrow." What can Hilliard Schools do to help our students, both those who will go on to get a four-year college degree and those who are not college-bound, prepare for success in the 21st century?
All right, guys, so yes, our slogan is "Ready for Tomorrow," and that is something that I've been experiencing my whole eight years on the term. I am so proud of our former board members to really get us a slogan that means so much every day. When we think of "Ready for Tomorrow," the portrait of the graduate is right where it's coming out. Every student without exception. So depending on where your student wants to go is what Hilliard Schools needs to prepare you for. If you want to go to a four-year degree, that is wonderful, and we can make you be on the college track. If you want to go into our trades, into our industries, we want to be able to provide that. Our partnership with Tolls is super important. So really, "Ready for Tomorrow" is whatever that student's tomorrow is, and as a district, we meet every student without exception through the programmings that we provide and partnering with their parents to provide that next step for that student. Thank you.
Brian Perry.
Yeah, it's really a big broad brush on whatever a student wants to go into with the rest of their lives, whether that be straight into the workforce, going into college, going into the military services. We need to make sure that they're ready to do that. And part of that, yes, we are actually the largest contributor to Tolls Technical Institute for students who want to go straight into a different field, and a lot of those students go to college after that as well, either with four-year degree or trade school. We also partner with Amazon Web Services and Arlington Industries to make sure that we're giving our students active, direct workforce experience, if that's what they want to do. But we're also meeting a very high college readiness score, and I'm very proud of that. We also have two Purple Star Schools, two high schools that support our military students who want to go into that field and serve our country in that way. So in any way, we make sure that our students are ready for tomorrow. Another area, Hilliard EDU, students who want to give back and become teachers to lead the next generation of people. So whatever you want to do, we need to keep offering diverse course curriculum areas to make sure that our students are ready for tomorrow in whatever they decide to do.
Thank you. Kelly Arnold.
So "Ready for Tomorrow" is actually where I'm living, as the mother of two alumni of our Hilliard Schools, both our Darby graduates. One did the four-year college track and is actually employed at OSU. The other is finishing up her work at Columbus State for a certificated program as a paramedic. So having kids who have been through our system and have gone to that next step prepares me to help guide our schools when we're talking about what is ready for tomorrow. And that includes making sure that every kid has the opportunities they want to pursue their passions, so that they can have the experience, the knowledge base, to go forward and try what they're, what they're passionate about and explore their careers. And we do that by supporting our teachers who give those kids those opportunities, by supporting programming that gives a broad base and a good depth of knowledge, and I'm hopeful that we can keep going on those paths.
Thank you. Our third and final question.
Me. Hey. I'm sorry. It's all good, it's all good. Sorry, sorry, Kay. Yep, sorry. No worries. So this is one thing I think Hilliard City Schools actually does a really, really good job at. My mom and I counted up, we have about 50 family members that have graduated from Hilliard City Schools over the last generations, and I am one of those, right? So I've seen Hilliard City Schools evolve when it comes to their course offerings, just from 2003 until now. I have nephews and nieces that are currently in our school district today. Some of them are at Tolls. My nephew graduated from Tolls three years ago. He went into the military right after graduating. He was a part of the Navy Robotics Team. My other nephew is part of the automotive team at Tolls, so I see it firsthand, and I think Hilliard is doing a really good job by offering non-traditional options for our children to meet their needs of how they, how they learn, their interests, so they can move forward within our community. On top of that, I was part of the Portrait of a Learner Committee last spring and winter, where we had these conversations. What does our graduate look like? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in.
Brian Perry, you will begin with our third and final question, and we ask that you limit your response question to one minute. How would you balance input from students, parents, teachers, and community members when making decisions?
That's probably the most important thing that any school board member or any elected official of any capacity can do, is balance the needs of the community. Really, you need to understand who the professionals and experts in the different fields are. When it comes to educating our students, I'm going to value the way the opinion of a professional educator a little more highly. When it comes to parenting a student and then raising that student, I'm going to defer to the parents of that student. When it comes to a student advocating for their own learning, that's actually one of the things that we came out of our Portrait of a Learner, was being a self-advocate, I'm going to listen to that student when they say, here's what I need in the classroom. It's really about taking diverse perspectives and making them into something that we can all get behind. You have to be able to do that. As an attorney, that's what I do every day, as much as we like to fight about things. Ultimately, we're peacemakers, trying to get two opposing sides, it's something that they can agree on together. We can't be opposing sides, we're different pieces of the same puzzle. We all need to work together, and that's how you do it, is by treating people where they are, understanding how they are as professionals, adding that all up, and you get a great district at the end of the day.
You. Kelly Arnold.
Yes, so when we, when we look at all the different pieces of our community, and it is a broad and wide range that represents our community, as kind of evidenced by here tonight, all the folks that have come out to understand our schools, understand our council. And like Brian said, we need to take into account our educators, they are the professionals here. They understand how education works. Our parents, absolutely. They, they understand their kids, and when we, when we, we need to listen to them, not just in conversations during conferences, but all through the year. And one of the things I know when we're having any of these conversations, especially as commissioner, it's about getting to facts, making sure that we're talking about facts, what is actually happening, what is really happening within our schools, so that we're talking from a basis that is rooted in truth. And I think that's where sometimes we go astray as a community, when sometimes things aren't quite the right perception because of misinformation out there.
Thank you. Caitla Master.
All right, I'm glad we asked this question, guys. I think we all acknowledge that teachers know best when it comes to academics, parents know best when it comes to our children, and administrators know best when managing the district, right? One piece I don't think we are addressing is how do we respond and actively listen to all members of that puzzle? I think we need to do a better job as a board, really sitting down with members of our community and understanding their points of concern. We're very diverse, we're very diverse in thought, right? And we need to accept everybody in this community, no matter if we disagree with them. And me, as a board member, I will be that person that will always meet with you at the table and have that conversation and respect you, as long as you're respecting me, so we can move forward and put the best interest of our child at hand when it comes to educating them. Thank you.
Nadia Long.
Yeah, so balancing input, this is what I do every day at Mars Pet Care as the Quality and Food Safety Manager. When you look at a factory, you've got supply, you've got quality, so balancing everybody and taking and listening and making the best decisions for brands is what I do. I've also done it for eight years on the Board of Education, so when you look at what we have been through in the last eight years, we've hired a new superintendent, a new treasurer, we have lived through a pandemic, we have gone through a lot. And through all of that, we are And through all of that, we are where we are today. So when I think about balancing that, um, it's really important for good governance of a board of education. And that's a big part of all of this. Making sure our students have a voice, a forum, and can give us feedback. Making sure our parents are at the table, the best thing for their child. And making sure our community is getting those students that are ready for tomorrow and being active citizens and really, uh, being a part of our workforce. So, um, over responsible governance as a board of education member, that's how I'll get it done and balanced.
Thank you. Now we're going to have one minute for closing statements from each of our candidates. We're going to begin with Kelly Arnold.
Thank you very much to everyone who came out tonight. I know life is busy and it's great when people come out and engage in the process. Thank you to the League of Women Voters also. Um, I, I hope you get just a snapshot with one minute. There's, there's not a lot you can get other than sound bites. So I encourage you to take a look at my website, KellyArnoldForHilliardSchools.com. And I hope you recognize my passion and commitment to our schools over these many years. Not because I'm running, I've always been there and I will always be committed to our community, whatever comes. Thank you.
Kate LaMaster.
All right. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I know my schedule's crazy right now. I have, uh, football practice going on that I'm missing at the moment. So I appreciate you all coming out tonight. Um, if you want a board member that is going to think with a business mindset, look at the, look at the areas of opportunity, but also celebrate success, I'm that person. Um, if you want a board member that's going to be kind to everybody, no matter the differences, not put each other down, not disrespect them, I'm your board member. Um, if you want a board member that knows the history of this community from generations and has experienced directly with family members graduating from our districts over the years, I'm your board member. If you want, um, a board member who's a mom, a current volunteer in our schools and has been for the last six years, a mom that did go through COVID with a first grader and taught him how to read, I'm your board member to have that voice. Um, take a look at my website, electkatelemaster.com. Just November 7th vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadia Long.
Thank you all for coming tonight and being educated in your vote on November 7th. I'm a mom across the district, which will guide me in making good decisions for each one of our students. My goals are physical responsibility, district future, and academic success. I am the experienced candidate. I have served as president. I've served as facilities and policy chair, and I've served numerous committees on the Board of Education. I'm invested in this district. I'm a mom with three kids. I'm a homeowner and I also work in industry in this community. Learn more about me at nadialong.com. And then the last, um, and all I ask is you to continue this journey that started when my son was in first grade and now he's in high school and keep Nadia Long on the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our candidates.
And good night. Thank you all for being here today. I really do appreciate it. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for, for hosting again. Um, I try to stay focused on what's important. That's physical responsibility, a culture of community and academic success and keeping our students safe. Uh, in support of these positions, with facts over these past four years I've been on the board, we've been able to reduce our administrative budget, save taxpayer dollars, increase students' uh, safety, increase, uh, school resource officers, including, uh, having additional guidance counselors for our students, um, really improving our academic scores across the board. Um, we've been doing this because we're ignoring some of the distractions going on and we're trying to stay focused on what is definitely important. Uh, to that end, if you'd like to learn more about, uh, what I've been doing these past four years and if you'd like to support that mission, um, please go to PerryForSchoolBoard.com. You can vote now, uh, starting, early voting starting today and then, uh, November 7th is election day. So please vote for me, Brian Perry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our candidates for the Hillary City Council and women who serve the community. We appreciate your time this evening. Now we'd like to invite the candidates for Hilliard City Council to come up and take a seat. This is Greg Betts, Mike Carney, Emily Cole, Peter Marsh, Cynthia Vermillion, and JT Islelike. These six candidates are running to fill three open seats on a seven-member council. Those elected will serve four-year terms beginning in January 2024. If you have questions for all of our candidates, please write it down and hand it to one of the lead members. Candidates will begin with a one-minute introduction and we will continue down the table in order. Let's begin with Greg Betts.
Hi, everyone. I am Greg Betts and I'm running for city council because I love this community and I simply miss serving my fellow citizens. Um, back in 2021, after 30 years of service and multiple trips to the Middle East, I retired as an Army carer. I tell you this because I want you to know that, uh, I know what it means to faithfully serve my fellow citizens. My wife and I've lived in this great city for, um, over 26 of the nearly 37 years that we've been married. And we, it, it was a great place to raise our two kids. They're both grown now and it's an even better place, I think, to raise our grandsons. Because we've seen Hilliard become a more vibrant and welcoming community over these last few years. I want to keep it moving in that direction. I believe that government, to be done right, begins with having empathy for your fellow citizens and then acting on that empathy in the form of service to others and the common good. So if you're looking for an experienced leader, policymaker, and problem solver.
Thank you.
Leads with empathy, I ask for your vote on November 7th.
Mike Carney.
Yes, Mike Carney. Um, I'm a faith-forward, uh, pro-family, people-first servant leader, um, very intentional in everything that I do. I made the best decision marrying my wife Kate, uh, 10 years ago and we, we decided to live in a heart of Hilliard and old of Hilliard. And, uh, since then, we've had four beautiful children. Blythe is nine years old and then Theo, Arthur, and, and George is two. Um, it's been a joy serving also at Davidson where I just ride my bike and, uh, I've been a coach and teacher of many students here, here right now. It's been sweet building relationships, um, with school families and, and my neighbors. I walk down the street and fellowship at Cornerstone Christian Fellowship where I'm an elder and treasurer there. Um, I was asked to serve, um, and I, I answered a call and I'm part of Team Save Hilliard. If you ever heard of these, seen these signs around and, and we, we want to, uh, participate in this continued good growth. We also want good education. I appreciate all the, all the candidates wanting to serve the board. Um, but we want good governance as well, responsible and prudent. Thank you.
Peter. Emily Cole.
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters. My name is Emily Cole and I'm excited to say that I'm a first-time candidate running for Hilliard City Council. I'm a nonprofit executive with an incredibly supportive husband, three very noisy dogs, one, and one current and one future Avery Gator. Hilliard is truly a special place to raise a family. We have all the benefits of a small town with the amenities of a larger city. And I can tell you that our family absolutely loved doing our part to keep local and family-owned businesses afloat throughout the pandemic. I'm a firm believer in community-driven local government. We as residents know what Hilliard needs to preserve our small-town heritage as we grow. And we deserve leaders who put the needs of the community first over politics. My priorities when elected will be community-driven planned growth and development and sustainability to preserve what we have for the future leaders of Hilliard. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Marsh.
My name's Pete Marsh. I've lived in the community for 17 years and Hilliard proper for nine. My wife Bev and I chose Hilliard to raise our family and our three daughters who are 10, nine, and five. I'm the owner of a small business located right here in Hilliard, Blue Oak Patio and Landscape. I've served on many local government boards, been a volunteer for my church, St. Brendan, uh, other charitable organizations, and have even served as a completely unqualified girl's softball coach. I've been a member of Hilliard City Council since I was initially appointed in 2018. My family and I love living in Hilliard and I've loved being able to have the opportunity to serve on city council as a way to give back to the community. I look forward to talking this evening about the great places we are continuing to go.
Thank you. Cynthia Vermillion.
Hi, thank you for being here. I ran in 2019 to bring positive change to Hilliard and I've strived to do that. Um, in 2021, I co-sponsored the nondiscrimination ordinance that extends civil rights protections to, to more people in Hilliard. 2022, uh, excuse me, in 2022, I, um, co, I sponsored legislation, um, to bring renewable aggregation to the city of Hilliard, which you, the voters, passed by a resounding 62%. And, uh, starting this month, those of you in the program will see a 40% savings on your electric bills over AEP Ohio. I am a champion of trails, multi-use trails and connectivity. I think that is so important to have that in green spaces and to, to have, um, a, a welcoming community here in Hilliard. And I believe that we are achieving that and, um, we are going in the right direction. Things are looking very positive in, in Hilliard and I look forward to serving you for four more years.
Thank you. JT Islelike.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Our city has seen remarkable growth in residential business and economic sectors. As someone who has worked as a legislative aide in the Ohio House Representatives, I've been involved in shaping state rules and laws, handling substantial budgets, and connecting with all Ohioans. While I'm passionate about helping Ohio on a state level, I now want to contribute more directly to my hometown, Hilliard. The city has been my home since as far back as I can remember and I'm filled with cherished memories. As my generation begins to enter the housing and job market, it's important that we have a seat at the table of government. Hilliard stands at pivotal moment and the decisions made after this November election will affect the city's future for the next century. The fundamental question is whether we want Hilliard to retain its unique character and community or a mere extension of Columbus. I'm ready to be of service and preserve Hilliard's character and community. I look forward to working on progress that is controlled, compatible, and neighborly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Carney, you will get the first question. Please keep your answers to this question to two minutes. Hilliard is one of the fastest-growing cities in Ohio. A lot of people are moving here. We have a challenge and an opportunity to balance growth and livability in Hilliard. City leaders recently announced a 10-year plan called Hilliard by Design. There are eight priorities in the plan, including focusing growth within existing boundaries, creating mixed-use walkable spaces, including downtown, expanding our network of trails, creating opportunities for walking and biking, reimagining Cemetery Road, encouraging mixed-use development at vacant and underutilized spaces, creating a green belt along Hilliard's western border, and expanding housing options. Where would you like to see Hilliard in 10 years? Please share your thoughts on one or more of these eight priorities.
Wow, that's, that's the big issue of the day. How are we going to continue to grow well and responsibly? Love it. Um, as, as again, part of Team Hilliard, you know, um, we, we want to represent the people, again, people first. And I think the community overwhelmingly, as we go and talk to neighbors, I, I met a couple right here, we want to, we want to preserve the character, as just JT said, the character of our small town. Even though we will, in Ohio and central Ohio, see a lot of growth, I don't think Hilliard has to be like the model of Columbus. And what Mayor Ginther and the city council has been doing and approving mass, uh, and, and high-density, uh, residential, uh, growth in terms of homes. We can still be Hilliard and continue to grow responsibly and focus on economic development. I think that is much, much needed. Again, I'm in Old Hilliard and we have 100-plus-year-old probably sewer and, and water stretching from Norwich all the way down to the First Roundabout. We have lots of work to do first in ma, maintaining and, and, and making sure we have the infrastructure for good growth, good responsible growth. So I think that is, uh, is a, is good that it's acknowledged the economic vitality of this plan. And another thing that is wonderful, and I appreciate it because we only have one car and live simply, trails and green spaces, I want to continue that, making that a priority. And the parks and rec, Ed Merritt, I, I spoke into about a vision that I'd like to see, uh, surrounding, uh, old, the old Hilliard, uh, the, the historical society, almost doing it Tuesday night, much like Thursday night is, but community growth that brings people together. This is what we love about Hilliard. We do not want to be Columbus here. That's, that's my vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Cole.
Thank you for this question. I think it's a really important one, um, especially as we evaluate all the different perspectives of all the candidates here tonight. Um, I can speak to a few things. First of all, we are most interested in the trails and the green belt that are proposed. Um, my husband cycles and has commented many times, we live in Old Hilliard as well. We're homeowners and commented many times that, um, it's alarming sometimes to cycle through Old Hilliard and then get on the rails to Trails. Um, I've been going door-to-door and I've heard that many times as well. So was very excited to see that in the plan. We also participated in the community plan development just as residents. We completed the surveys as many of us were asked to do. Um, and I'm not sure frankly, what we're saving Hilliard from. I think we have a very beautiful future ahead of us that was put together by residents who were invited into that process. And I look forward to championing what the residents want for Hilliard rather than a vision set forward by one or two candidates or one or two council members. Um, it's a large part of why I'm running. I work in consensus building professionally in the nonprofit world and I look forward to making sure that resident needs, resident input, and resident feedback are at the heart of everything we do here on our city council. So thank you so much for this question. That's my largest priority is that we actually put into place what the residents want to see in Hilliard.
Thank you. Peter Marsh.
Thanks. We have a very solid, comprehensive plan that was just put together. There was community involvement at every step of the way, uh, from the very beginning of finding out the basic ideas of what do you want Hilliard to look like, all the way through to comment on the draft, uh, as it was put together. This is the most fiscally-focused, comprehensive plan that Hilliard has ever put together, uh, which I think is incredibly wise. We all want to improve our infrastructure. We all want to have more activities for, uh, people to do, things to, to participate in. That's where community grows. But those are all funded by tax dollars and we can't, our tax dollars come from these developments. They come from the mixed-use developments where people bring their offices. Uh, and so I, I just, I reject the notion that, uh, this is not something that is beneficial to our community, whether it's in Old Hilliard or the 270 corridor. These are things that are going to allow us to fix aging sewer lines, allow us to fix intersections that become problems. These are going to allow us to put on more activities through the rec and parks program. Uh, I do also want to point out that one of the areas I'm most, uh, excited about is the green belt on the west side. The, the Big Darby region is a, you know, I live there, but it's also, it's, it's dear to my heart from a sustainability standpoint. Uh, I'm really excited about the concept of sustainable growth out there. Uh, we're getting close to changing our zoning code for a 70% open space requirement so that we can start to comp, compile, uh, this land that will, uh, protect that precious resource of the Big Darby Creek.
Thank you. Cynthia Vermillion.
When I moved here almost 20 years ago, one of the things that stood out to me was how friendly and welcoming my neighbors were. I loved my neighbors. And, um, and it's what I love about Hilliard. And so for anyone to even suggest that I would want anything otherwise than community in Hilliard is, is frankly absurd. How do we develop community? I'm involved in our Hilliard community. I'm out there involved in, in different organizations, and I get to meet a lot of people. And, and so the community plan that we passed in April, I honestly believe will continue to unite us as a community. I am also Team Hilliard. I've been accused of being on Team Columbus, which is, again, another absurdity. I am a Hilliard City Councilwoman, and I love our Hilliard City staff. I want to give a shout out to our staff. They do have a heart for service. I've seen it. I was out there on the trail one day last year, and I saw a woman walking that she was having trouble, I saw a park and recs, a person come by on a little gator, and she noticed, she turned around and went back and picked this woman up and took her back to her car, and I thought, that is a heart for, for service. That's what Hilliard does. That's what we do for each other. And I am all for a community plan that will bring us together as a community. Thank you.
JT Iseldeike.
So I appreciate the hard work that the 27 members and those on council have done to put together this comprehensive plan. Two of the main features that I do appreciate about the plan is the fact to create multiple different missing middle housing options. I think that's a great idea. Myself, as a young person in the Gen Z, as well as those as an empty nester, deserve to have a place to downsize to that is affordable to them. We definitely need to look closer into how that affordability looks. According to research that I've done, Gen Z plans on buying a house in the next six years, 72% of them, and of that price range, it's about $250,000 or less. So we definitely need to be looking in that price range to build for us, young generation, and those who are the empty nesters to help create that cycle all over again that's lacking. My mom especially, she's tired of mowing the lawn when I'm too busy at work. But growth is inevitable, but it is how you go about it. This plan here, I don't think is the answer for what the city needs. All the purples and browns, up and down, Hilliard, all these high-density apartments and mixed-use developments, I appreciate what the ideas behind it, but I don't think that's the right answer for the city of Hilliard. I do think that our next steps is to take a pause and reevaluate. I think we need to get more information. I've talked to a lot of residents here and around the city of Hilliard, and they had no idea what, what was going on in the whole comprehensive plan. So I think we need to pause again, get more information, and talk to the community. We need to go out. I, I, I saw an interesting, my friend mentioned it to me today, called flashboat.com. Residents can register, and there you can put quizzes that any residents can take. They can see the facts, and they can see what the residents are interested in the community. This is how we can get our answers that we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Cole, we will begin with you for our second question, and we ask-
Thank you. Okay, so the, the two areas that I really like most are expanding the opportunities for, for walking and biking. You know, what connects, what connects a community better than the ability to just be able to walk without, walk or ride your bike without dodging traffic? What, what, what better way to unite a community than to, than create ways to, to walk or bike or ride a skateboard or whatever you want to do? To go visit your friends, go visit your neighbors, go get a bike to eat, you know, go, go downtown and, and maybe eat on the patio outdoors, et cetera, and just enjoy yourselves. So I love that aspect of the plan, and I too am very excited about the, the several different housing options that are, are in the plan as recommendations. You know, I, I want to point out that this is a concept plan. It is a plan that is designed to be a guideline over the next several decades. It is not locked in. As a matter of fact, you know, those browns and reds and purples and all that stuff that Mr. Iseldeike was talking about, you know, in that, in the actual plan, if you look at it, you'll find that the, that those charts have a disclaimer, and, and it says very clearly, "The area planned concepts are general guides to indicate potential development options. Plans are schematic only, and the actual mix of land uses and locations and configurations of buildings, parking areas, streets, and access points will be determined through the public review process for individual development. Properties retain all existing rights." So along the way here, you know, I, I've 30 years in the military. This is what we do. We put up a concept plan, and then as we go through, we make changes as needed, and we get input from all the stakeholders before we move forward. There, there are not going to be any high rises because according to-
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I am truly sorry.
That's quite all right. I am long-winded.
Emily Cole, we will begin with you for our second question, and we ask that you limit your response to this question to one minute. Morsey estimates an additional 3 million Central Ohio residents by 2050. What are your ideas for Hilliard to sufficiently address this growth?
Great question. I think it's really important to be realistic about we, what we on city council can do and what we on city council cannot do. We cannot mandate who people sell their land or their homes to, nor should we. We are a home rule state in Ohio for a reason, and we're proud of our autonomy. We on our own in Hilliard cannot solve Central Ohio's housing crisis. I have a bachelor's in economics, yeah, excuse me, and a bachelor's in political science, I have two, and a master's in public administration. I believe in the power of numbers. Facts are how we make decisions, and the numbers for Hilliard's growth over the last decade are clear. We've grown by 10,000 people, but net add has only been 350 new students in our school system. As you say, Hilliard has grown, and Hilliard will continue to grow, and I think that our comprehensive plan was very clear about potential options for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Marsh.
So the growth is coming, and we all know it, and we need to plan for that. One of the nice things about the comprehensive plan, as JT brought up, is a little bit of a focus on that missing middle. We have, we have rental abilities here in Hilliard, we have single-family homes, but there's a lot of those homes that are in the, the duplexes, the carriage house-type things, the bungalow homes. Those are all things that we have much fewer of. Those can be more affordable for first-time home buyers. They can also be more affordable for those who are looking to downsize. Part of planning for all of the people coming to our region is having the amenities for them here, and that's another reason that these mixed-use developments, which will bring employment, they will bring amenities such as restaurants, those are important factors for planning for the growth that's coming to us.
Thank you. Cynthia Vermillion.
Hilliard has grown very quickly between 2010 and 2020. We will continue to grow at a little slower rate. By 2050, I believe we are projected to grow by another 15,000 or so people. So where do we fit these, these people? Well, we do need more, more housing. The average cost of a single-family home this year in Hilliard is up to 454,000. That's not very affordable for our young people. So that is something we need to look at and do more of this missing middle, we call it, and entry-level housing for our young, young people, and not just young people, other people as well. We need to plan for our infrastructure, and that is what our Hilliard team is doing. They are analyzing what, you know, what our needs are for sewer and roads and all, and all that, so we are getting that job done.
JT Iseldeike.
Well, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse at this point. Everyone has said it before me, economic and people growth is coming to the Central Ohio region, especially with Intel, among other big, major company announcements, that I'm super happy that we were able to land, thanks to our, our, our great government and the Jobs of Hire program. I do, like they've mentioned, again, just building that missing middle. We need to build the missing middle and make it affordable for young people and empty nesters, and a hammer and home. We need that. There is currently very little places around the Central Ohio region that is building it. There is a huge demand for it. We can build it here. We can attract all of those people. It will be a unique aspect for the city of Hilliard that will make us stand out versus the rest of the communities. We can be the passion for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Betts.
Okay, you know, growth is coming, and, you know, it, it's, we, we have to prepare for that contingency. That's all there is to it. And the great part about it is we had a lot of great folks who actually did that. Volunteer residents with input from experts and with input from hundreds and hundreds of Hilliard residents. The concept plan, the comprehensive concept plan, is a great plan. It's a great guideline. In the military, we have these things, like I said. We, we prepare, we have a contingency for everything. When we pull, when, when something, some emergency happens, we pull that contingency off, off the shelf. It's, it's not going to be a step-by-step process, but it is going to be a guide that's going to help us move forward to accomplish the mission, and that is preparing for this, this growth that we're about to experience. My, my plan for doing that is to follow this plan and make adjustments to it, to the, to the approach accordingly, as we need to with input from citizens.
And Mike Carney.
Again, I, I think to, to approach this inevitable growth is, is our choice, and in Hilliard overwhelmingly, Hilliard families do not want to grow exponentially as Columbus has, and it's, it is in our neighborhoods. Mill-run, high-rise apartment, I mean, that is going to increase already high taxes. It's going to increase already bad traffic. No one wants those things done so fast that, that it's going to be worse and it causes greater safety issues. I've been on a couple ride-alongs, and Columbus is not proactive, they're only reactive. We were on the run and couldn't eat dinner, and, and that bled into up into Roberts Road. It is in Hilliard. If we continue to max out the potential in residential rentals, it is not going to get any better. So we need to preserve Hilliard and stay family-oriented in such a way that we're responsible and prudent as we grow economically and provide housing for everyone.
Thank you. All right, we're going to do a third and final question, and we ask that each candidate keep your responses to one minute for this third question, and we're going to start with Pete Marsh. What are your thoughts on the suggested changes to Old Hilliard?
I think what's important to remember is this is a concept plan to guide the growth. All of the decisions will ultimately be made by Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. There is no such thing as a domino effect where developers can do whatever they want. That doesn't happen. We have checks in place for that. Old Hilliard has become so much more vibrant than frankly I ever thought that it could when I first moved into Hilliard. When I first came here, there was hardly anyone down there. Now, any night of the week, you go down there and it's active, and we can continue to do that, and we'll be wise as a city council. We all live here, we all want the same things. We like the small-town feel, it's what attracted a lot of us here. That, that will be part of the, the thought process on the approval, so I'm excited about continuing to make Old Hilliard even more dynamic.
Thank you. Cynthia Vermillion.
I love to ride my bike on the trail down to Old Hilliard and walk around Old Hilliard, visit some of the restaurants, businesses down there. It's an exciting, vibrant place to be, as Pete mentioned, and that's what we want to maintain, the character, the, the historical nature of Old Hilliard. We're just looking to expand on that by bringing, you know, more people downtown so that we can have a continued vibrancy there. I love Hilliard Station Park. It is a fabulous place to be. One Sunday morning, my husband and I rode our, our bikes down there, and we took our shoes off and played in the splash pad. So adults can play there, too. But I love Old Hilliard, and that's what we're going to try to preserve, and I think this comp plan does exactly that.
Thank you. JT Iseldeike.
Our downtown Hilliard area is truly amazing. What a transformation it's had ever since I moved here, back when I was a little kid. We've had several different companies come naturally, Be Bubbly, Hilliard Station Baking Company, Hill Garden, you have the brewery there, and soon we're going to have our very own winery. I mean, how many people can say that they have a winery smack dab in downtown? I think that's pretty cool. But I am concerned about the height density that is being proposed in the comprehensive plan. Once it is zoned, there is no turning back. It is no longer no, but rather how tall and how many units we can put there. No matter what other people may say on this council, that is the case. It has happened before, and it will happen again. I do like the aspect, I will say, about updating the sewer lines. I do think it is important to do. That is something that I do look forward, and look forward to continuing to expand Old Hilliard to keeping that small-town community vibrant feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Betts.
So I love the suggested changes in, in the comprehensive plan. Again, it is a concept, and before anything happens, it's got to go through the zoning committee, and then it, it, for big changes, it's got to go through the city council as well. And, and the city council, and, and, first of all, the zoning committee is made up of, of area residents, right? And they're going to listen to the, the citizens of Hilliard. So is the city council before they make any big changes. But I, you know, one of the things that brought me here 26 years ago was the way Hilliard is. I love that small-town feel as well. You know, take my grandkids over and go to Splash Pad all the time. It's just a great place to hang out, you know, go there for the Thursday night concerts, et cetera. It's going to stay that way, you know? There, there's not going to be high rises. High rises by definition are 75 feet above where the, the emergency vehicles can, can get to, to where somebody's living. They're not going to be like that. It's, we're going to maintain that, that feel, and it says so in the plan. It says that they're going to focus on that.
And Mr. Carney.
Yeah, I appreciate the, all the sentiment in preserving the character of my neighborhood. Again, 10 years ago, I, I moved and walking with my wife before our firstborn, before Station Park, and I've seen the transformation in Old Hilliard, and it's very dear. I intentionally moved there to do community within a, a mile square foot, to fellowship, to do business with James Ford, to, to, to eat and play and ride my bike and ride our bikes now. I have skin in the game here. And Old Hilliard, yes, is a gem. It's the gem of the town, and we want to keep it that way and invest in restoring the infrastructure that no one really sees, but we can continue to have good growth and responsible growth like it has been in Old Hilliard. We just do not want to, to plan for additional rentals that people may not care for. As homeowner, as, as homeownership-
Thank you.
People care for their homes.
Emily Cole.
Thank you. I too am a homeowner and a resident of Old Hilliard. We intentionally bought our home because it backs to Avery Elementary School, and I dreamed of the day when I could open the gate and send my children to the school every day. We love Old Hilliard. We absolutely think that we need to develop the infrastructure to support. I've sat in multiple city council meetings where experts from the city and advisors from the city have begged council to consider some of this throughout their meetings. I think that's why it's an integral part of the community plan that I'm sure you've heard of by now, since you've been here this evening. It's important to me that Old Hilliard stays a place where all of us feel welcome in community, and where all of us can dine and shop and do recreational activities like ride our bikes through downtown, and I see no reason why that won't be the case in the future, and I look forward to working with community.
Thank you. Now we're going to begin with one-minute closing statements, beginning with Cynthia Vermillion.
Thank you, and thank you all for, for being here, and thank you to the League for hosting us. I thank the people of Hilliard for trusting me to be your voice these last four years on Hilliard City Council. I have taken that responsibility very seriously. I come prepared to my meetings. I do the research. I read my materials. I ask questions. I make sure that I come prepared. I'm sure my colleagues think I ask too many questions. Anyway. Anyway, um, so I see myself as your voice. I respectfully push back on comments made to make sure that facts and truth prevail during our meetings. I successfully sponsored two important pieces of legislation, the nondiscrimination ordinance and renewable energy aggregation, both to make Hilliard a better place. I have been a bold leader on your behalf, and I look forward to serving you for four more years. Thank you for placing your trust in me.
Thank you. JT Iselde.
I want to express my gratitude once more for all of you taking the time to join us and engage in discussions about the critical matters of our beloved city of Hilliard. Our conversation tonight has shed light on various pressing issues for you to reflect on. Personally, after I graduated college, I had the free, freedom to locate anywhere, yet I made the deliberate choice to return to my hometown. This decision was deeply influenced by my strong roots here and my aspiration to raise a family in this community. I am continued to witness in Hilliard's continued development and advancement, but I believe it is crucial for this growth to occur in a measured, harmonious, and neighborly manner. Hilliard has been a source of unwavering support for me and my family, and I hold a deep appreciation for all that this village has given us. I am committed to giving back to this community that has meant so much to me and my loved ones. Together, we can work towards a brighter future for Hilliard, where families like mine can thrive, continue to call this city home. Thank you for considering me as your representative, and I ask you to consider your support for me on November 7th. Thank you.
You.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank the, the League of Women Voters for hosting this great event tonight, and for all of you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here. I really appreciate that. So my three decades of military service, which is also government service, has led me to the conclusion that government has two very basic functions. One, to protect its citizens from all forms of harm, and two, to empower those same citizens to achieve their full potential and to pursue their own version of happiness. And that when government service is done right, it begins with having empathy for your fellow citizens and then taking the responsibility to act on that empathy in the form of service to others and the common good. So if you share these same values, and my vision for Hilliard is an even more vibrant and welcoming community, I ask for your vote, honored before November 7th, and I give you my solemn word that I will work relentlessly toward protecting, empowering, and simply improving the lives of my fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Carney.
Yeah, thank you for, for coming out and learning more. And I strive to be a man of fidelity, fidelity to God, fidelity to my family, fidelity to our community, and I, I'm, I'm striving to serve in a way that listens to people and hears what people want for their community. And so, I, I vow to listen. I, I vow to collaborate. I vow to be a high-character person who is honest and genuine. Like I said, and everybody has said, you know, we, we represent our families, and we want to represent your families too. And so, we want to listen and do the very best in terms of growth and education and good governance, so that we're responsible and prudent, and people can be proud, continue to be proud of our wonderful and charming community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emily Cole.
Thank you to our hosts and to everyone who attended tonight and asked good questions of all of us. In case you missed it, I'm Emily Cole, and I'm a first-time candidate for Hilliard City Council, but I'm a decade-long community builder here in Ohio. I'm a working mom with the hard skills and the heart skills to bring community-driven leadership to the forefront of building a brighter Hilliard for all our families. I've worked to bring resources into growing communities across Ohio for the last decade, striving for affordable healthcare, adequate community resources, voting rights, and community-driven public safety. I've built community-based organizations from the grassroots to the grass tops because I know our communities are always stronger when the people who live in them are in the driver's seat for our future. So I'm honored to be considered for service on Hilliard City Council, and I humbly ask you for your support and for your vote. Thank you.
You. Peter Marsh.
I'm running for reelection to continue the positive momentum we've seen over the last several years. Everywhere you look around you, we see great things happening. New employers coming into Hilliard bringing hundreds of high-paying jobs. We see opportunities for recreation and wellness literally coming out of the ground at our new community center and recreation campus. We see continued trail connections and our neighborhood sidewalks being improved. The world has taken notice, as evidenced by Hilliard being named a top-seven intelligent community by the Intelligent Community Forum. But more importantly, our residents have noticed. In our 2022 survey, 95% of residents said they would recommend Hilliard as a great place to live. 94% rate our overall customer service of Hilliard employees as good or great. Both of these exceed national benchmarking standards. We're on the right track in Hilliard, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue us on that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. And I want to personally apologize to Greg and Kate and Brian for almost skipping you. That was truly an accident.
No problem. Did a fabulous job.
See Elizabeth, she wanted to make some closing comments, but-
On behalf of the League of Women Voters, thank you to all of our candidates for participating in this forum and for being willing to step up and run for office. We know that's not easy to do, and we appreciate your, your taking that on. Thank you, Ms. Rader, for moderating this event. Thank you for everyone who came out this evening to learn more about the candidates and the issues. A special thank you to our young voters or soon-to-be voters who are here this evening. It's good to see such young, bright faces in the crowd. A recording of this event will be viewable on the League of Women Voters and Metropolitan Columbus Facebook page. We urge all of you once again to make a voting plan now. You can request a mail-in ballot from the Franklin County Board of Elections. Early voting has started, and Election Day is November 7th. Please check our voter guide at vote411.org for a full list of candidates and a sample ballot. There are hard copies available as well. Thank you all, have a safe trip home, and have a good rest of the evening.